There shall be order in this room on this day. The day of Friday. It's Friday, right?
It's Friday.
Yes, Warlord.
Now try not to get too rowdy. I know a fucking rowdy bunch when I see one and you look like a rowdy bunch.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Perfect. Now then, I am Warlord Kyle Pred of the northern province that is known as Blaine County.
Long may he reign.
They thought they had me, but I'm back.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, Mr. Chavez.
How y'all doing? Nino Chavez, Mayor of Los Santos County. Thank you for coming down.
We do thank you for coming down on this day, November the Fast 2024, but it's supposed to be 2029, I think. Welcome. Welcome, people. Welcome. Today is a joint town hall adventure and you all get to participate. There'll be prizes, cash prizes.
No, it's not.
There's no cash prizes, no cash prizes, but thanks for coming. Now then, I believe Mr. Chavez should start as this is his domain.
All right, absolutely. Ladies and gentlemen, from the onset of the campaign leading up to the mayor's being announced, myself and Pred agreed that unlike the previous regime, we would be working together. We have a couple of projects that we want to let you in on. Give you a little bit of a summary of what we've been cooking behind the scenes to bring some life back into not just one county, but both. Cooperation. Let's uh, let me show a sign of hands. Who here likes to drink alcohol?
Me, I'm an alcoholic.
And how many of y'all ever had a nice craft beer, hit a nice pumpkin beer or a nice Guinness? Or a nice, what do you like drinking? What do you like drinking, sir? Go ahead.
Just fucking good old Aussie VB, mate.
A little bit of Aussie V D.
Not VB, it's not venereal disease, it's VB.
VB? Alright. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you to imagine a San Andreas where any one of y'all have a distillery. For what? Your own moonshine. A little business where you brew whatever it is, whatever your recipe you got, whether it's your grandma's recipe or maybe one that you came up with yourself. All legally. How many of y'all own businesses down here in the city? Or wish to have one in the future? Liquor licenses where you can sell said moonshine. Ladies and gentlemen, Pred, how would this system work exactly? And how is it gonna bring some life back into the city?
Well, let me get you started. So apologies for things not moving as quick as they should be. It's tough when you have three police departments coming after you raiding your goddamn county-owned properties and trying to throw your ass in jail every fucking day. As you can imagine, I've been a little tied up. So I do apologize for that, but you know, hey, these motherfuckers are drawing blood and I'm drawing it back. Anywho. Now, the program is simple, but the program is not yet defined. But I will let you know what we have so far. Up in Blaine County, we're looking to legislate and make the manufacturing or brewing, what are the people called that brew stuff? Fucking they got a name.
Distillery. Brewmaster.
Yeah. Yeah, brewmaster, whatever that's, yeah, brewmaster, distillery, whatever. We're looking to make that legal. Alright? But it is gonna come at a little bit of a price. As you know, Blaine County, under Andy Jones, it was failing. They were losing money weekly. And now I have, I have Blaine County making seven million dollars a week. It is now, over the last three days, Blaine County has made eleven million dollars. Yeah.
Wait, no it hasn't.
It's the truth.
How is that possible?
We've been making money again in Blaine County. We need to continue to make money so we can make a lot of the services cheaper for you. Now on to the distillery program. You will have to register your moonshine kits or whatever the fuck you crazy quirky nerds are calling it nowadays. You'll have to register it with the Blaine County government. Alright, real simple. Alright, there will be a little tax that's gonna be implemented. But think of the freedom that you get to brew without having to worry about Uncle Sam or in this case, Brittany Angel kicking in your door with those fucking bastard marshals.
Fuck the marshals.
Fuck the marshals. Can I get a fuck the marshals from the crowd?
Fuck the marshals.
Yeah, fuck the marshals. So, right in the ass. For a little tax, okay, for a little tax, you get the freedom to brew your moonshine. And that's that. Perfect. Right? Now, any questions about anything I've said? Do you disagree? Do you think that you shouldn't be taxed?
Quick question over here. Uh, will there be a proof limit?
Fuck no, it's moonshine. You, it's moonshine, brother. If you, sometimes you drink moonshine, you lose your sight for an hour. Alright, don't be a pussy or just don't drink. Yeah, how about that? How about you go and roll in a, in a, in a fucking Alcoholics Anonymous class then? Alright, cuz we get fucked up in Blaine County.
Alright.
Alright, any questions for anyone that isn't a fucking moron?
Alright, so Fred, so if it's gonna be state certified, you know, distillery, is this state or maybe not state, it's gonna be county certified actually. So is the county enforcement responsible for security of said stills? Will BCSO be?
So I will answer the first part of your question, then you can continue onward, alright? We will be having prohibition agents making sure and monitoring this stuff to make sure that you're, hey, you better sit the fuck down!
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
God damn it, causing a fucking scene. Bobby, watch that fucking guy. Keep your eyes on him. Keep your eye, you don't need to shoot him, man. Just keep your fucking eye on him.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just being true.
Jesus, Bobby, put the gun away.
Blue Man Group, call them down, Blue Man Group.
Bobby, they stepped Caesar, they didn't shoot him, okay?
Is there ever two Blue Man? It's only one.
What's gonna happen is, Mr. McNulty, would you come forward for a second? I'm glad you're here.
Sure. Yeah, McNulty, woo!
You're looking at the chief prohibition agent right here, making sure everything's fine.
Oh my god, congratulations, sir.
Yeah, they call me the fucking hound out there, I sniff that shit out.
But it will be known that it won't just be BCSO having this job. There will be civilians that are able to have this job as well. It's just that it's easier for Mr. McNulty because he can enforce stuff and already has police power.
Yes.
Or we can discuss it later on, but I think Mr. McNulty's got a passion for it. He loves, hey, he loves, he loves taking your moonshine to distillers, breaking them down.
And then drinking it.
Yeah.
And then drinking it, yeah, right in front of you.
Yeah, cuz it's not illegal to drink it.
Hey, we drink and drive in Blaine County, alright? Hey, we drink and drive up north.
Hey, wait, hold on.
Hell yeah.
Alright, so what's your next part of your question there, Mr. Misha?
Oh, I was just wondering, so is the prohibition agent will be responsible for security of said distilleries? So if I'm gonna, for example, I don't know, fill the fucking backyard of the heretic with like fifteen fucking stills, I will make, they will make sure that nobody will, you know, swing through it.
Alright, so that is gonna be on that, so uh, I would like to create jobs for that, but initially that's gonna be on you. Alright?
Alright.
I'm just making, I'm making you aware that right now, I can't, I can't promise you that right now cuz I don't know where this is going. But I would like to be able to provide that cuz I think it would create jobs.
That was my initial idea regarding creating said jobs and, you know, stuff to take care of.
Where did you say you were gonna put them?
And, and keep in mind, they're, they're, it is not just the distilleries that are gonna be benefiting from this. Licenses for transportation.
Bobby, go drag that guy back in here.
Alright.
Fuck, sorry.
Alright, uh, as I was saying, uh, the distillery is not the only thing that is gonna be generating uh, value for citizens. But there will be licenses for selling that in the city. Now, as for the benefits of that, I'm sure you can imagine, uh, but also the exportation of said moonshine down at the docks. Allowing for those who cannot find the patrons down in the city to make money through a different manner. How many of y'all raise your hands if you've done a state-run uh, job in the last month?
What's happening?
And when is the last time you've seen a new state-run job hit the market? Raise a show of hands. This is the kind of vision Pred and I have. We're not gonna sit back and allow these state bosses to tell you how you can make an honest living. We will create them for you.
Job creation is the future. You want to have a function and we want to create that function for you. Alright, we want you to be able to do different things and work. Everything's already there. We just gotta legislate it. Which is gonna take some fucking time because being mayor is a lot like not being mayor. Because I could legislate the same goddamn shit and fucking petition for it without even being in this fucking position. I just get to do it for free. The system's fucked. The system is fucking shit.
And we're here to mend it. Online at a fucking time.
Mend the system! Mend it!
Hey. But you know, we and Pred can stand up here and tell you how we wanna solve your problems. I think we wanna hear from you, what are your problems and what can we resolve immediately? Now, um, does anyone wanna begin?
That guy does.
Come up, come up front here.
Well, it's um, it's just a question about the moonshine. Do you know, is there like a rough like timeline of when that's gonna be legislated?
Sit the fuck down.
Alright, good question, good question.
Well, listen, I'll answer it like this. It can be anywhere from three days up to three weeks, depending on the red tape me and Pred are gonna have to tear down to make it a reality. Alright, uh.
How about the distribution of that Mary Jane?
Oh, very good question. We have, as uh, you may or may not be aware, cultivation of marijuana. There are licenses for that now as well as for dispensaries. Uh, tomorrow morning, there'll be an application sheet for Los Santos County and I'm working very closely with Pred for uh, doing very similar with Blaine County. I think the way that we're looking to chop it up is cultivation is gonna be happening more in the north and dispensaries more in the south. So.
I already signed into cultivation law as well, so that should be implemented as state law soon.
Warlord Nino.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, would you be increasing the limit of the weed a person can carry cuz two joints is barely enough?
Uh, it, wait, it's already, it's six joints in Los Santos County. Have you found any trouble with the law?
Damn, how many joints do you need?
Hey, you never know.
Yeah, no, uh, I believe it's actually statewide is uh, six joints or the equivalent. Uh, Mo, come to the, is that you, Mohammed? Oh no, over there. Mohammed, do you have any questions? What are the problems that you are facing as a citizen of uh, Los Santos State?
Just some goddamn marshals running wild.
Oh.
Fucking true.
You wanna come up here and share your experience?
Fuck it. Does anyone know what the purpose actually is?
Oh.
No.
It was to police the.
And I was one.
It was supposed to be to police the police.
At least that's what it says on the legislation, right?
Yeah, you know, I got Forte fired when I was a marshal.
Respectfully.
But instead, what they're doing is going on right along with cops and doing cop business. Coming down a drug bus, getting out into shootouts with cops versus uh, apparently, apparently they're cops, working alongside cops.
Yeah, I can actually piggyback this. Uh, yeah, a lot of marshals are actually conducting traffic stops without police departments there. Yeah.
Saw one happening the other day myself. It was a tragedy.
So if these so-called police of the police are supposed to be investigating cops for possible corruption or wrongdoing, that's not gonna happen cuz they're working right alongside those same cops that are gonna do the dumb shit. Oh, and the better, the best part was uh, the useless ass marshal that asked a cop, oh, or the cop that asked the useless ass marshal a question and she doesn't even know the fucking laws that her boss put in place. That's the best part. The person who, oh, I also apparently found out there's a law that uh, just went out that apparently fucking Angel now directly oversees the police force as well. Oversees the police force, oversees the marshals and oversees the whole legislation. This is fucking great.
Amen, brother.
We will uh, we'll be sure to look into this.
And you know, that ain't bullshit, yeah. Doing normal cop shit. I've seen it.
Okay.
Doesn't that, that might actually cause for conflict of their current duties if they're serving in the field alongside officers. How can they hold them accountable if they're standing next to them?
They are liars.
Alright.
Thank you, Misha.
Looks like a audit might be in order.
Any more questions from the crowd?
I back you on that all day long.
I have a question.
Yes, Peach.
What are you gonna do with the lack of parking spots for homeowners?
It's actually a real question.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
I have one parking spot at my house.
We need more parking spots at our houses.
Park, park in the street.
Most of Sandy Shore's parks at the BCSO.
True.
True.
In Polito, there's only one, uh, there's only one public garage as well.
Yeah, the Sandy Garage has like four slots for every person or something.
It's literally garbage.
Very interesting.
I, I wish that we could say we'll get more parking, but.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, come on, I mean. We're gonna pave, we're gonna pave, alright, I know what we're gonna do. We're gonna bulldoze down Andy Jones' old, her warehouse that, that a known gang operates out of and we're gonna turn it in to a parking lot.
Yeah.
Parking.
What's that, where's this lot?
This lot is that?
It's in Polito.
Oh, that does, okay.
Kinda far away.
Oh my god.
Oh god, we're gonna bulldoze down half of the Blaine County Sheriff's Office and put a parking lot there.
Oh!
Can we just bulldoze the marshal's office and put a parking lot there?
Yeah.
Actually.
Maybe, yeah, maybe we can.
I don't wanna fuck with marshals, they got tanks.
Wait.
Honestly, yeah, I love marshals. Please don't, please don't hurt me.
Yeah, why don't you tell everybody why you're scared, Jeb?
I, I ain't trying to bulldoze down none of the, they'll get the killdozer. I ain't trying to become killdozer. They got actual tanks.
You want me to talk? I got the firsthand experience.
Oh yeah, come on up, Forte.
Well.
This guy's getting fired.
Tell them about how I got you fired.
Well, Kyle was a marshal. And basically, uh, Nino, I'm pretty sure you were at that court case.
Uh, we didn't, yeah, I remember. I woke up.
Yo.
Yeah.
Basically, I got fired because the marshals twisted my words. And uh, basically, you know, a funny situation went from, oh, he's a, he's committing basically treason.
What?
And there was like, and there was like other stuff, but I don't need to go into that. But back now, thanks god, to uh, Mr. Peters or Ass Chief Peters, cuz he saw the good in me, gave me my second chance. But I know, eh, you know, I had a marshal call me the other day and they said, do you wanna do your audit? I said, is it recorded? And they said, yep. And I said, no, thank you. And they said, why don't you want an audit? And I said, well, because uh, people gave me a second chance and you guys never even gave me the light of day, so. Marshal's to my dick.
Hey, Marshal's to all of us.
Yeah, okay, I like working.
Forte, when he got fired from his job, cuz I got fired from mine a few days later.
That is true. It's a marshal that got me fired.
I remember, I remember when Forte got his first set of felony charges and I tell you, he didn't deserve any of that. Forte's a good man. He's a good, he's a good, great man.
Just want what's best for us.
And I didn't even think he should have been fired for what he did when I fucking was investigating him, but then hey, they did it anyway.
Alright. Ladies and gentlemen.
Fucked up shit going on.
Questions, concerns for me and the mayor of Blaine County.
Warlord, Warlord of Blaine.
The warlord of Blaine County.
Is there ever a chance that, you know, us uh, non-civilians can possibly uh, ever get weapons licenses?
No.
It is something we are trying to uh, look into. As you know, the constitution.
I want a gun in every resident of Blaine County's hand. A gun in every pocket.
Hell yeah.
Fuck yeah.
And that seven-day wait period's bullshit. You should be able to buy as many guns as you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the fuck is he saying right now?
What's the point of guns if you're not gonna stockpile them, I say?
Hey, good to see you, Frost. Alright.
Grievances? Any questions?
Nah, trusting him.
What the fuck is he saying right now?
Shouldn't expect the, the legislation regarding mechanic shop uh, operation times to be actually enacted.
Uh.
What's that?
He's uh.
You know, the legislation where we can sign in at any time, not only between six, seven.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, TBD on construction.
Yeah, okay, that's what I expect. I just double check in.
Not construction, just the uh, ability to sign into said job during.
Construction.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just wondering if there's like any news regarding that.
Uh, the best way I can put it is uh, anything that myself and Pred legislate into uh, existence, it then goes into a filing cabinet from which at some stage, something will come out of it. So that's how we've gotten the helicopters. Yeah, so you know, I, I don't wanna be commenting on estimates and stuff for uh, an area that is not our purview.
No, no, it's totally fine. I completely understand that's like, you know, out of mayor's office hands.
Alright, alright, fantastic.
I am looking to revise the toll booth legislation tonight and I got a few other pieces of legislation that are gonna be coming out. The thing is, here's what I want you guys to do. What I wanna do is I wanna push legislation and if you guys have a problem with it, you call me or you contest it. I want you guys to be a part of the process. It's important. It's important that things go to the polls.
We can actually make it so you can have more guns.
You know, how to, how to appropriately get things in places. I'm not a big fan of legislation being changed in the dead of night. Right? I think that your voice should be heard. That's a part of the process that I'd be happy with. But what I'm not happy with about the process is the length of time it takes to kinda get there.
Hmm. Alright, alright, anything else y'all wanna bring up today while you have us? We are looking to do this more regularly and when we do post it again, uh, feel free to bring your ideas to the table. Cuz at the end of the day, you know, when you bring that forward, we can only do our best estimate as to what we believe our counties need. You, the people, know the best.
New rule, next time you come to one of these, everyone has to bring two friends.
Alright.
Alright, perfect.
What if you don't have to be friends?
And just don't bother coming.
Ouch.
Yeah.
Yeah, just don't bother showing up. Go do something else.
Uh, Pred, I have a question back here.
Yeah, come on up, Forte.
What is that? Yeah, come on up front.
It's just a quick one. Do you have any plans for the rundown uh, piece of shit of uh, sheriff's office in Polito? That's not being ran out of. Those have asbestos and stuff.
I'm glad you asked. I do think that getting a small sheriff's department going up in Polito would be beneficial for the people up there. The number one complaint from people of Polito is, there's no one to stop me.
Yep.
How do you think application process would be for that?
Yeah, that's a complaint. They've been, they said, I had one time someone came and told me, I can't even train my hangarounds up here because there's nobody up here.
That's crazy. Do you have a plan to uh, you know, get people up in that office? Do you have any names that you could, eh, eh, drop here?
Uh, I don't have any plans that I wanna talk about yet.
It feels like Forte is trying to drop his name on that.
Well, I can tell you who's not my sheriff.
I think he wants to make money up there.
I can tell you who's not my sheriff, Mr. Jeffrey Bones. Hey, listen. Look, I want you guys to know something and I wanna be public about this. I can only take so much before I have to act. The Blaine County Sheriff's Office has let me down time again and time and time and time and time again, as they've let down you. That's why I believe that it's time to have another sheriff election. What are your guys' opinions on the BCSO currently and, and Bones in particular? Does anyone have any opinion?
We hate him.
Is that McNulty?
Jesus Christ. You thought, you thought I was Bobby?
Oh, so, sorry, sorry. It sounded like.
Wait, that was Bobby?
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I heard that too. Uh, who here is a Blaine County resident?
Right here. Hall of Chaos Legion.
Oh, I am.
Alright. Maybe we should hear from them.
Yeah, Misha, you uh, yeah, Misha, you seem, you always have something to say.
I called Misha out like that.
You always got something to say, Misha. Come on, keep saying it.
Oh, how, how, how you're doing this? Oh, Jesus, he's putting me in the spotlight right now.
Oh my god, he looks sick. What the fuck happened?
Blaine County Sheriff's Office couldn't be uh, judged by their high command or command because all you know, I think they are doing pretty good community work, actually. They repaired our pier and uh, are willing to work on some other small civilian-sided projects. And they're pretty understandable about like uh, lay of the land, so to say.
I would beg to differ.
But, there are some people within that uh, department that very much are against what being a Blainer embodies.
Oh, wait, he's taking the word.
Those people uh, should ru- look really, really long and close into a mirror every fucking day and ask if this is what I was supposed to be doing. If this is for the betterment of this community, because let me tell you, some of them are fucking things up.
What's your opinion on the office generally? Oh, okay, let's let Misha finish real quick. One second.
Yeah. What was the question? Sorry, because.
Are you confident in Jeffrey Bones' leadership?
Uh, personally, I don't interact with him much, so I'm impartial.
Basically, what he's saying is he hasn't done shit.
Could be one way to take it.
Uh, isn't their office right next to y'all's mechanic shop?
Yeah, but like as I said, um, he is not the main like, you know, representatives of the sheriff's office that, you know, are come to our shop to get repairs, et cetera, et cetera. We barely see him.
Jesus. Jesus.
Alright, what's that, Arto?
Hey, go ahead, sir.
Well, speaking of all the BSS, uh, BCSO and community outreach, they're probably community outreachin' to you because you're literally beside them, but I've never seen them up north. All they do is, uh, fucking roam around up north and cause fucking trouble and leave. The only people that would come up north to actually have a community outreach is LSPD.
Really?
Yeah, they would come up there and get repairs and talk with us too.
Interesting.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah, that's not the first time I've heard that, uh, BCSO doesn't really go up to Polito. I mean, I know that when, uh, the, uh, the Polito Punisher was going around, they didn't really make an arrest.
Oh, not only that, they just come up there and cause fucking troubles and fuck around and leave.
What, what kinda troubles are we talking about?
Yeah, I, I'm curious by what you mean by that, brother.
They just don't fuck around with the people up there and leave, that, that's pretty much about it. They cause scuffle and they try to cause issues and leave, they provoke it, I guess.
What, though? I, I'm not, I want you to know, I'm not coming from a place of like, you know, I'm being defensive. If I can make our terms of policing better, then why not? So what do you mean by that?
Let me, uh, let me see if, uh...
Yeah, ta, take your time, I'm, I'm here, brother.
We need flops here.
Oh, I know what Flops is gonna talk about, I, I know what Flops is talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I heard that the last time the BCSO went up to fucking Polito was to raid Kyle Fred's goddamn community center.
Oh my god, wait, you're not wrong, to be honest.
No way.
Jesus fucking Christ.
Oh, god.
That's...
That's crazy.
I, it's, it actually wouldn't be sa, I mean, i- if it wasn't so true, it wouldn't be so sad.
Does anybody have anything else that they wanna add today? It was four days ago.
Any plans for music? Personal question. The music business, I know there's a lot of legislation-
Is Fred a band?
No, it's just for me, I think. Like, uh, any, uh, you know, uh, future legislation or movements for the music industry?
I would love to see, uh-
Highly interested in facilitating something like that.
The thing is, as, as badly as me and Nino wanna be able to tell you that we want you guys to do something, it's not exactly something that's in our purview of something that we can accomplish for you sadly.
I mean-
For, for, we are doing an event in about two weeks in Senora Desert, so I would need music.
DJ!
Yeah, but somebody that doesn't play EDM.
Yeah.
Yeah, fuck you then.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a couple options, right? Uh, one is, let's say you wanted to do a music event, uh, both Fred and, uh, both Blaine County and Los Santos County do have event legislation where you can submit and get, uh, funded.
Hmm.
Uh, and then there's AMP's legislation that allows, uh, upcoming independent music labels, bigger labels, et cetera, to get funding as well. So, there are avenues by which artists can get paid.
I will say this now and I will say this publicly, if you put together a music event, alright? I'll give you between fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to do it.
Yeah. Yeah. There you go, that's good.
If you can put together a concert and a music event, alright, I will pay you to do it.
Alright.
Oh yeah.
Alright. Well, uh, I think this is, uh-
Events in general, I will, I will gladly write checks for fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to facilitate events and the stuff that it needs, but you're gonna have to justify the cost.
I think we should wrap it up.
Yeah, we've started talking with Leah about the upcoming event, uh, in Senora Desert. So we'll have one there in about two to three weeks, we're just wrapping up.
I'm not doing it, so don't go.
Alright.
Just joking.
Get in contact with me?
Yep. Alright, which photo?
Put that photo up there.
Hey, what was it?
Yeah, one second, uh, your honor, I just gotta check.
It was the DOJ badge and it said Department of Jokes.
Follow any trespassing, Bobby?
My taxes paid for this building.
Wait, let me, oh, I can find out who said-
My taxes paid for this building, I gotta go.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming through. Like I said, we're gonna be doing these more often, so do feel, uh, you know, bring your ideas to the next one. And as Fred said, try to bring a friend as well. Um, and, uh, you know, your communication-
The only way that these things are successful is if we have large groups and large quantities of people here.
Yep, one thousand percent. David, they're six minds, alright, don't take care.
Hey, no problem, I'm gonna beat the char, and don't worry, everybody, I'm gonna beat those charges.
Beat those Chinese, he's gonna beat them!
Actually, uh, could we talk a little bit in private regarding your, hmm, distillery legislation?
Yeah, we can.
Just say we've been cooking some ideas.
Your EDM smells.
Oh, Nino.
Uh, yes.
I, I want to answer your question.
Fuck you! Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Has there, uh, has there been any changes for, uh, regarding the airmaster?
Uh, airmaster is currently run up by, uh, Nick Simone, who is gonna be getting all the details out, hopefully within the next week. So, yep, and that's gonna include like how the licensing is, how the training's gonna look like, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, alright.
Alright, easy.
Shit, okay.
I just don't wanna, I still have permission to-
Hey.
Sorry.
Go saying, everyone should own like six guns, it's not just the place.